Fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. I'd like to invite Pastor J.C. Hawkins from Cornerstone Word of Life Church for the invocation.
First bow heads. Well, I want to thank you, Lord, for this opportunity. Lord, I pray for every council member and every family member that is represented in this community, Lord. Bless them in a special way, Lord. I pray, Lord, that as members of the board, Lord, I pray, Lord, that they are good stewards over the authority that you have given them, Lord. Bless them with your wisdom, your hope, your discernment and knowledge, Lord, for every decision that has to be made. Lord, we pray for your guidance, your wisdom and your understanding on every discussion, Lord, that is here today. And we thank you for this, in your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Please show him the pledge. All compliments. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember, Council President Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaford?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening? Great. Approval of minutes. We have minutes number twenty twenty-three dash zero seven dash W S from July nineteenth. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we have minutes number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen dash R G from July twenty-fourth.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Abstain.
And the motion passes. We have one item under presentations and awards from the Huntsville Madison Foundation Canines for Coping Program. Please come forward. We are very excited to have you here tonight.
Being a puppy.
Well, this is definitely not about me. This is about her. And Council President Bartlet, I'd like to say thank you to you, to the entire council, to the mayor, for supporting us with this program. This is Joe Taylor. Joe is April handler manager person. This is Stephanie Williams. Stephanie is the manager of the entire Canines for Coping Program for the Huntsville Hospital System. It is an honor for us to be here for you to meet Apple. She has brought, I cannot begin to explain, the joy and the difference she has made to Madison Hospital already, to our patients, to our family members, but to our employees as well. When Apple and Joe go up on the floor, the difference in the whole demeanor of our staff changes. And I think we have fabulous employees all the time, but when Apple is present, they go over the top with just getting to interact with her. And that was our goal when we brought Apple on board. Not only would she be for our patients, but she would be for our employees as well. The last three years has been tough. You all know that with COVID. She's brought a ray of sunshine that I did not realize four legs could quite accomplish as she has, but she really has, and we could not have done it without you. So we wanted to come by and just say thank you so much. It's quite an honor for us to get to have Apple. And I strategically put Joe's office down the hall from me, so I get to see Apple every single day. And it makes my mornings start off extremely, just extremely well. So, Mayor, you might want a dog.
Yeah. Well, I want a dog. There's no question about that. So, yeah.
Any questions for us about Maple, Apple, because I can't talk, or what she does? Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is such a blessing for our community.
It truly is. And you know, she sees not only pediatric patients, but she sees a lot of our Alzheimer's patients as well, and it makes a big difference. And I think it makes a difference for their family members to get to have just a little spark of friendliness to come in. Absolutely.
And Mary Lynn, if there are members of the community who want to support this program, this is a new program, how would they go about doing that?
They certainly can. We have a Canines for Coping website they can go on. They can go to the Huntsville Hospital Foundation, and that group did not come up to the front, but Sarah and Ashley, where's Sarah?
Ellen.
You can certainly go to the Huntsville Hospital Foundation website. We couldn't have done this without Sarah and her staff, because they've really helped. I've been a pest for six years wanting an apple, and I finally got her, and I couldn't have done it without Sarah and her team. So all you gotta do is go to the website, and we would love to have you support this program, anyone in the community.
I, yes, I just, can I make one comment while you're doing that? Um, my mom was in Madison Hospital, and my mom is not an animal person. She is not. But she wanted to see Apple. So Apple came into her room, very well-mannered, and just kind of sit there and let the rest of us pet her while my mom watched. And it just brightened her day, even though she's not an animal person. She, it really does, it touches people more than you realize it does. And I'm so excited to have her at Madison Hospital.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Can we see Apple?
Go sit in the chair.
Can we sit? Okay, we might have a chair.
Yes, it is.
Give her the gavel.
Can you put Apple there? Oh, please.
Oh, there she goes.
Oh, girl.
All right. You got it?
I guess I did.
We've got cards and buttons for you. Apple has her own business.
That's professional. Apple, fantastic.
That's left throws right.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, best presentation of the year.
Right.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who supports that program.
Can we have a dog at every meeting?
Oh, yeah, that would be nice.
Very calming.
Right in the middle.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're at the portion of the agenda for public comments that are related to the agenda. Each speaker gets three minutes. Please state your name and district. State the agenda item you are speaking to, and save any general comments until the end of the meeting, when it is the appropriate time to do so. The first person that we have signed up for public comments is V. B. Otten.
Is that?
Perfect.
Is that okay?
Good.
I don't know. V. B. Otten, District Seven. I don't know, I didn't write down everything, what, why it is on the agenda, because every single thing on this agenda needs explaining. I have never seen an agenda so bad in my life. But the main one I want to, if I don't finish here, I'll finish later. One of the ones I want to talk about is the one in the Recreation Department about, what the agenda said was weather notification. Now, as soon as I saw that, I thought of all the storms that had come through this city. I got caught in one of them. I had finally made it home in time. For other ones, that if you've got a, something that will tell, that will notify when we're gonna have weather problems, that's unreal, because we need it. But as I read the extended agenda, it's lightning. It notifies you when you've got lightning at the two parks. Now, anybody that's ever lived in Alabama for any length of time, if you've ever gone to a football game or a baseball game and hadn't been caught in rain, you haven't lived here and been to that many football games. Isn't that right, John? Uh, I've been caught in many of them. I don't know why we have to spend eighty-seven thousand dollars for something to notify for lightning. There are not that many people at these games, I mean, in these parks. I'm sure it'd be nice to know, but to me, that you can get out in plenty of time. You know when lightning's coming. We've had enough storms here to know. I just don't know, why, I would like to know also, uh, is this system better than an app? I assume it might be. I look at that every morning when I get up. And how far away is the lightning when this equipment notifies somebody? I would like to know how far away it detects lightning. And, uh, okay. And I consider this recreation, and you know, the state does not require that the city provide recreation for its citizens. We have, from the beginning, been having it when I first moved here. Our first director had his office in the back of his car. Uh, and it's grown tremendously, and we consistently spend many, many, uh, much, much money, too much money on recreation. Now, I have some more on the agenda, and I'll hit you up that later. Quickly, in two seconds, on your appropriations bill now, now. Uh, we don't need to be nonprofit now. You can, uh, you can approve something that's not nonprofit. You know, can I ask you for money? I guess I can. I'll catch you later in this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Otten. The next person who signed up is Bernadette Mayer.
Okay, good evening. I'm Bernadette Mayer. I live in Heatherwood, District Five. Okay, the first item is looking at the, who signs off on things that look like Jay signed for Roger Bellamy, is he absent? E. Michelle Dunson, what position does she have? You know, I know that these are kind of internal documents, but they've been made public on the council thing. So, you know, those things need to be kind of described out. Okay, then, um, finance invoice for barge design from bond account. Um, I'd really like engineering to describe that project. Okay, then, Endfinger Roundabout, um, that it includes AT&T reinstalling lights. If some of that work is residential development, costs that are normally absorbed by the development, yes, the city needs the roundabout there, and yes, some lights were taken out and that kind of thing. But does the city absorb all of Athens' utility charges? Does the city absorb all the street lights that are going to get put back up? Because honestly, in the development with two hundred and forty-two houses or whatever, and then also the cabling of AT&T. Uh, clear delineation of what is done on the main public access outside of the development. Has the city been responsible for all cabling access on the main roads? Replace reasonably what was torn out, but no handout to developer on their normal costs for their two hundred and forty-two lots and homes. Advanced payment to AT&T, I expect this is for Endfinger and not for the city. Okay, number twenty, twenty twenty-three dash two four five R. Revised policy appropriations for outside agencies. I was at the recent Finance Committee meeting. No discussion there, no real meeting. I understand they just took out a whole bunch of stuff, and it just allows the mayor and the Finance Committee to approve stuff? No. City council is being sidestepped here. Appointed Finance Council is biased. The mayor does not have this power via the council-mayor form of government, and this should not be granted, given away by this city council. Do not change the current policy. Number I, Red Sage software, need IT input. What is the upgrade all about? The Joomla and website, all that stuff. Okay, and then under building, CMS renewal. Okay, they need input from IT, engineering, legal departments, some kind of discussion. Just not this renewal thing. Okay, um, I'm gonna jump way back to the end on recreation. The Thor Guard Weather Notification System, eighty-six thousand. Honestly, Huntsville Hospital with their pool, they check if thunderstorms are in the area, and they can decide when to close the pool. I think the management within Recreation can close down Dublin and Palmer Park without...
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. State your name and your district.
Margie Daly, Karen Denzine, District Six. Okay, so we had some finance things. S M E, twenty-six thousand dollars, civil engineer for barge designs, plus twenty thousand dollars. Why so many consultants, yet more and more hiring, and all of my public records requests are denied? We have the right to know how many employees we have. I want to know why I was refused my freedom of information by Mr. Kilgore, saying it was my idle curiosity. You don't have to answer that. Okay, the Madison Branch Roundabout Endfinger. We already had two change orders on this, equaling about a hundred thousand dollars, and now it's quoted as the first draw on the bond? Why? Does he then get extra money by not the contingency? He's only allowed so much over the price. Uh, two forty-five, changing the policy to give away our tax dollars. They no longer need to be proven that they're a nonprofit. This is just another slush fund for nepotism. Okay, two fifty-eight, eleven hundred dollars for brochures for the police committee from the downtown landscaping budget. I don't get it. Sod, fifteen hundred dollars, twenty-seven thousand dollars for holiday decorations, yet not even an attempt to fix the safety on our street lighting. How many fatalities before you give us safe streetlights again? Then, two sixty-six, again rebuilding our website. Red Sage software. I have inquired for freedom of information. I get no answers on what all these, this is an add-on for another six thousand dollars. We have numerous nefarious software, the worst being the solar winds with the Chinese chips. We don't need any more outside marketing just to fleece tax dollars. Two forty-eight, CMS cell tower consultants. It's an out-of-state firm, three-year contract out of North Carolina, a consultant that we're paying for travel. It's absurd. We can't find somebody in the state of Alabama that we don't have to pay out-of-state travel. Uh, then there was another change order for the barge that's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And then somebody's doing annexing of more property. They gotta be insane to just want to pay more. And sometimes you get the Madison schools, sometimes you don't. Then, one eighty resolution vacating more flood pains to build houses. Would, you know, it just creates flooding in our neighborhoods, which you guys are quite aware of what you're doing there. Then the recreation, the weather station, we don't need this. Everybody has an app on their phones crying out loud. Eighty-seven thousand dollars? Please fix our street lights. We deserve, and the freedom of information, that's all right in the Constitution.
Thank you, Miss Taylor.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Johnson. I'm in District Four right now on Whisperwood Lane, but I guess it'll be redistricted to Seven if that plan goes through. Anyway, longtime listener, first-time caller, as I say. But yeah, the thing tonight is twenty twenty-three dash two fifty-two R, the eighty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars for the lightning notification. Um, I've got a, there's a, the best app for my weather I've found is this WAFF forty-eight app. And all weekend, the little guy's voice would come up and it'd go, boop, boop. Lightning detected twelve miles from your location. It knows exactly where I am, and it's free, and there's not any egregious abs or anything. So I just don't think this is a thing that the city wants to get into, is providing weather information for people who, if they're interested in it, they can already get that for free. And also, you might want to think about the liability of this. If something goes wrong with this, and there's some kind of weather event that this thing, even if it goes off and works right, uh-oh. The, you might get, the city might get sued because they didn't provide enough of a warning or something like that. So I would just totally stay out of this whole department and just let the private sector handle it. Seems to be like it's doing a pretty good job already. Thank you. The dog was cute, too.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. Being known, we will close public comments and move to the consent agenda and Finance Committee report.
I don't know, am I?
Mm-hmm. The other members are not here.
I guess I am.
By default.
Okay, um, so.
Finance Committee met.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met and reviewed all of the bills and the updates, and we have, um...
Found everything to be in order.
Yes, found everything to be in order. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
And, um, our Finance Department has reviewed them also. And so with that, I would like to move to approve.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the items on the consent agenda?
I do have a question on the sod. Who's going to be maintaining this roundabout, if you're cutting the grass and that sort of thing, once we put in the sod? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, just to repeat, the question is, we've got, we're gonna be putting in sod in the other roundabout. My question is, who's going to be maintaining this? Is it gonna be cut? Is it just gonna be allowed to grow and to weed? What exactly is happening with this besides just putting down the sod?
Well, I requested it, because I don't know if you've been by there lately, but it looks really bad with a whole bunch of weeds. And so got approval to find out how much it was going to be, and we will be maintaining it, just like we do all of our right-of-ways. We're currently maintaining it now, in that we're mowing the weeds, now we're putting in some nice sod.
And then we're gonna be mowing the sod and that sort of thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Keeping it.
Already mowed the weeds.
Yeah, we, yeah. Weed is already currently being mowed, but now it'll, it'll be much nicer. I don't know if you've been by there lately.
I know. There's been a lot of discussion about what we put in there, and whether we do flowers or rocks or something like that. And this is the first time I saw that the sod was coming, and I just wondered how we were maintaining it.
Oh, okay. I was thinking we had discussed it before.
We discussed it at the last work session. I think you were not able to attend.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we had discussed it.
Okay. Yeah, it was the best advice by Public Works and Tidewater that we would put in grass rather than any kind of pavers that people would drive over, or, you know, I have one resident want to put a bench in the middle there so that they could come and watch the roundabout. And so sod was the best way to go, and we'll do a great job maintaining it, just, you know, like the right-of-ways.
Okay, just another cost. Um, and who has a question about what was going on down in Volchrod? Didn't somebody have a question about that just a second ago?
You talking about Madison Branch? You talking about the roundabout, draw number one?
I know. I wrote on the back, and I didn't...
I didn't hear anything.
Somebody, we had a question earlier. Do you have the question? Well, I was gonna follow up on their question. Um...
I will, at least to my understanding. I know there was a question about draw number one. That usually means when they ask for their first payment. That is what the draw means. So...
No.
No. But answering your question, draw number one, just like if you've ever had home damage or whatever, and you draw from, that was your question. Uh, they came before the council, and we voted on them. I mean, that was how those amendments happened. I don't remember when, but they came before us. We deemed them appropriate. We voted for them. They increased the total price by that, and they've now asked for draw number one, which the council just approved. So they'll get their first payment out of that account.
Also, I wanted to comment on revised policy for appropriations to outside agencies. What we're doing is we are eliminating the need to supply documents that were not being reviewed in the review process of the applications. And some, um, some budgets do not fall on the same year as like our fiscal year. And so that was causing problems for some of the agencies to try and provide that in a different format. And we still have the same criteria for our award. We just are no longer requiring them to produce excess documents that are not being reviewed.
When you say not being reviewed, not needed to accomplish what we need to accomplish?
Exactly.
the process still works the same, is they get it in, they get in the initial budget that comes to the mayor's office. We review it, decide what we will and will not, you know, bring to finance committee, who then brings it to council. So the same process is being followed.
Right.
The same distribution is followed, with the exception of, we used to wait until no nonprofit could get their money until after the first of the year. We now have changed that and we start working to bring something forth to council fairly quickly after it's approved to get to, give those organizations their money so they can do the things that they've said to support the city more quickly.
Right.
For several of them, we still talk to you guys about who would you like to see, who could still come make a presentation. We used to make them make a five-minute presentation or up to five minutes. Sometimes they went longer. Just to give you an idea, now that's readily available if anybody needs to see it. But sometimes you guys still wanna know what a Madison Chamber or Huntsville Chamber is doing and we'll make sure we get them up for you.
And like the mayor said, we're still doing the same process. We are just no longer requiring these documents that were not necessary to make the decision.
There you go.
Any other questions? And then ready for vote. Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes. Presentation reports beginning with Mayor Finley.
All right, two quick things. One, we had a meeting here at four o'clock, which was kind of our second community, probably third community meeting with the redistricting. Kind of got the computer up, the boards, you know, a lot of things on the fly, listening to some of the comments, not only from council, but also from the community. Slaughter and Associates is taking that back. They'll continue to work with Mary Beth. We're looking to hopefully have the public hearing for what they would present to you guys for initial approval on October ninth, which will give the community time to see that again, to make any additional comments. If everything still looks like it's on track, we would like to go ahead and bring to council for your vote of approval for those districts on the second meeting in October, which will be October twenty-third. Just to give the community an idea, we learned today that basically, once these were approved, we'd have about thirty days, at which point the new districts would become the districts.
Wait, was that new information?
Yeah, we got that.
Brian, do you wanna?
I was able to confirm that with the statute that this would not become effective until the next election. That's written into the statute.
And now all of a sudden, so why do we say it then?
Oh, can I do my, in honor of Saturday football coming up? Not so fast, my friends.
Absolutely. How do we miss that?
Hold that line.
We have the statute and it seems intuitive that that's the way that it would be. But when you continue to read the statute, it does actually specifically state that it does not become effective to the next election. There's also provision that said that, that the plan becomes effective immediately if no action was taken. So it didn't make a lot of sense, but, but I was able to clarify once you stepped out and during the meeting. So I apologize for not being able to clarify that.
Oh, the districts will stay the same until 2025. However, you'll know what those districts will be, hopefully, October twenty-third. How's that? All right. Secondly, next, this Thursday night at Toyota Field, the Celebrate Madison event that our Madison Chamber puts on to give us the ability as a community to celebrate our city. I think eight's open, if I'm not mistaken, six, I think. And we start the process at seven, the program at seven. And then we have a couple drum lines there. It ends with fireworks, which is never bad for anything. And we have the opportunity in between to give a quick update on our community and celebrate all the things that we have going. So this coming Thursday, free event, Toyota Field, six o'clock with fireworks at the end. And that's all I have.
Thank you, District One.
Yes, well, I'd like to just start by expressing my condolences to Councilmember Spears on the loss of her mom and Councilmember Denzine on the loss of her father. And just know that my thoughts and prayers, I meant of her husband, excuse me, my thoughts and prayers are with you both.
Thank you.
This Thursday, the concert last week was rained out. So the, we get another chance to have our last concert in the park this Thursday. Kelly Joyner will be performing at seven P.M. at Home Place Park. There's not a bad seat in the house, so please come out. There'll be food trucks and a lot of fun. And the, I'm sorry, not Thursday, did I say Thursday? Friday. It's Friday because we'll all be at Celebrate Madison on Thursday. So Friday at seven P.M., please mark your calendar for the last concert in the park series. Weather looks great for both events. High of eighty-three on Thursday, which just sounds wonderful. And weather looks good on Friday as well. So hopefully we'll get that last concert in. And that's all I have. Here's your two.
Yes, I want to thank Councilmember Roblesky for pointing this out to me. In the Senior Life Magazine, which is available at Kroger and at the library, they have an article on, from TACOG. And it is Back to School Tips for Grandparents. TACOG supports our area agencies for aging, meals on wheels, senior centers, and several other different, um, senior RX program, several different things like that. And they are very instrumental in helping our community. In fact, was it last week? The days are blurring, I'm sorry. It was last week, Madison City Schools received one of their retired vehicles for their use at their, um, their academy over at James Clemens to help students who have difficulty getting to the doctor or to different appointments, they're able to use this vehicle in order to help them. And so that was a very good partnership. Thank you, Mar.
I'm gonna stop.
I'm having a really hard time at work tonight.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But it's a great partnership between the city and with TACOG. And this is a tangible demonstration of TACOG's commitment to this North Alabama district. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, District Six.
All right, first I'd like to lead off with the Madison Police Citizen Advisory Committee. They are having their next meeting on August twenty-second. The topic is the school resource officers, officers. They'll be doing a presentation and be there to answer questions. So it's a perfect time as we get back to the school year for parents and the kids to come and learn more about how the officers actually provide such a wonderful benefit to our students. And, um... It's at the library, right. Would you like to say? No, it's six o'clock. Six o'clock on the twenty-second at the library. Hey, um, I'm a person one out. Um, as I started this two years ago, we found my son, now my husband was first diagnosed with colon cancer. And throughout this time, I've always shared with everyone in this community, because I believe we are a community and a family, of what has gone on and the journey that Dave's gone on. And you've celebrated the highs with me and you've been there for the lows. The Wednesday after our last city council meeting, we saw the doctor and the doctor put my husband into hospice care. He just, it was time to enjoy time with family. And that was on Wednesday. Dave was able to dress himself and eat breakfast and everything else before he went to that. Eight days later, Dave passed at home with the family in a very peaceful setting. It was very merciful. He had suffered and it was beautiful. But I just wanna thank everyone from my heart for all the compassion and all the love and all the caring that was offered to my family during these last two years. And it was beautiful to see the number of people that showed up for the funeral to honor us. We are a family, we are a community. We work together. I know we don't always agree on a lot of things that come before council or that happen in the city. And that's okay, 'cause no family agrees on everything. But at the end of the day, we still come together and we do really have a heart in this community. And I just have to thank everyone from my heart for all that you have done. I will be forever grateful for it and I appreciate it. And that's all I have, thank you.
District Seven.
Um, so I just wanna mention, I know Parks and Rec has basketball. Signups are currently underway. They do a really good job with that program. So if folks are interested, please look, look at that out on the website. And I will say, I know Cory's up here a little bit later for Parks and Rec, but having been out at the parks, and I do have my phone and have multiple free apps, been caught up there many times in no man's land. And if you've ever seen a few thousand people try to leave a place at one time, it's pretty interesting. So I'd like to hear more about it, I think get some of the questions answered and the details about it. But I can tell you, our current condition and relying on people to have free apps when some people don't have cell phones is probably not exactly the greatest thing to do. But would like to hear more about it when it comes up, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. I have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two five six dash R authorizing the archiving and streaming of the August fourteenth work session that we just had.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second and in session. Ready for vote. Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Just have a couple of updates. On July twenty-sixth, I attended a regional collaboration meeting at the Cook Museum with Launch Twenty Thirty-Five. And at that meeting, our own Mary Beth got a shout-out from the presenters on the Singing River Trail, talking about how she's worked with developers to help pay for and develop parts of the trail. And she was held up as an example. And I wanted to share that with all of you because we're very proud of the work that she's done and she's being recognized across the region. On July twenty-seventh, I attended a Korean War Veterans Luncheon. And on July twenty-seventh, that date is the seventieth anniversary of the Korean Armistice fighting. So it was a significant date. It was my privilege to attend and it was a wonderful ceremony. Again, I want to express our condolences to Karen and Connie. It's been a very tough time for two of our councilmembers and we have lifted them up in prayer and we continue to do so. And then tomorrow, no, Wednesday, Main Street Cafe is reopening. I think we're going to have a ruin cutting at ten A.M. I think we've moved that. So congratulations and I'm so excited that Main Street Cafe is going to be back up and running. Um, next, we do not have any board or committee appointments and we will move to public hearings.
Council President, I'm sorry, I was gonna point out that we had put an item, a resolution for the, to vote on the archiving of the work session for today if you wanted to take it up tonight.
We did that. That was the first thing I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Okay. All right, now, public hearings. And Ron, you wanna come forward for resolution number twenty twenty-three two sixty-five R?
Good evening. The revenue department has one item for public hearing tonight. We have resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two six five. And this is a request from Me So Happy LFC, Doing Business with Me So Happy. The business has requested an on-premises beer and wine license for location on one oh four intercom. The reason that this business is applying for an on-premises beer and wine license at this time is that it is a new business opening in Madison and everything is in order for this to reconsider.
Is anyone here for the property for the hearing? All right, we will open public hearing. Anybody from the public who wants to speak to this item?
Margie Daly, Karen's District. A while back, when we started doing the liquor licenses, I requested that we get some kind of mapping as to where the liquor licenses will be, are in the city and that when new ones come up, they get added to the mapping. That was six-plus months ago and I've never heard anything about it. So since we're adding more and more, and I know this is Town Madison, which is fine 'cause that's an entertainment district, if I understand.
No, it's not Town Madison. Madison Boulevard?
Uh-huh. So are we gonna work on that where we could get a map with this, with the liquor licenses so that we know? I thought we were gonna separate the liquor licenses and do something so that the liquor licenses aren't near the schools. Is that gonna happen or that was just a false promise?
That's for us.
I don't remember anything about that.
Oh, it's in the public record. I spoke on it. I asked and was it Johnny Blizzard that said he would do it?
Liquor license near a school?
No, 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 that we could map out where our liquor licenses, like, and then we talked about, there's been conversation about that we would not put liquor licenses by schools like we used to have it. Nobody remembers that? Okay, so, yeah. And then, thank you for answering my questions.
Is anyone else with public comments for the public hearing? Being known, we'll close public hearings. And do we have a motion and second?
Uh, move to approve.
Second. Motion and second now, open for discussion.
I just have a question. Did that used to be the Japanese Edo? Okay, so that used to be Edo behind, you know, to the south side of Madison Boulevard? You know where I'm talking about? Okay.
Any other questions? All right, ready for vote. Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And motion passes, thank you, Ron. Department reports beginning with building.
Good evening. What I got is resolution twenty twenty-three two forty-eight R. It's authorizing the renewal of an agreement with CMS Center for Municipal Solutions for the technical cell tower permitting. And what that is, is no cost to the city, no cost to the city, they review and advise us to issue permits on cell towers or modifications of antennas to cell towers. And the developer, not developer, but the contractor, they give us a check for the permit and also gives us a check for an escrow account. And that money's paid out of the escrow account to CMS and whatever's left over at the end is given back to the contractor.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and second, any questions for Dustin?
Dustin, what all goes into that technical review?
They do load analysis, structural analysis of the tower, fall zones and all that to make sure it's gonna handle the load of the new towers or existing towers or antennas.
Is there any, what? Talking to me or Dustin? Dustin, all right.
Yeah, so it does, it does load analysis and structural analysis of the towers to make sure it's out of the fall zone of any, any structure. And it, any new and existing antennas that's added to that tower, it takes a load of that.
All right. I know a while back, when Megan was here in her previous capacity, we had a discussion, I think, about the new five G, XG, whatever the number is now.
Small cells?
Yeah, small, this has nothing to do with that. Okay, all right.
Those are, those are just something like typical utility poles, you know, it's nothing that's a hundred and fifty feet tall.
Right, right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And motion passes, thank you, Dustin.
Legal was asked to prepare ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two sixty-one. This is the first reading. Basically, the legislature added a few new offenses and so the municipal court needs to update their fines to reflect those, one of which was a new offense involving smoking in a car with a minor and another one was selling synthetic marijuana to a minor. So that's what we're doing here, is just simply including in our new schedule fines, those new fines that were just passed by the legislature.
And it's just first reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Engineering.
Okay, first I have resolution number twenty twenty-three two thirty-six R. This is authorizing a professional services agreement with a G-Tech in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for a G-Tech engineering study for Spencer Green subgrade evaluation to be paid from the engineering budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, any questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes, next.
Okay, next I have resolution number twenty twenty-three two forty-seven R. This is authorizing the purchase of a property for the Brown's Fair. This is authorizing the purchase of a property for the Brownsfayer Road Culvert project in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars to be paid to the Heritage Station Homeowners' Association.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion or questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
All right, next is resolution number 2023-255-R, authorizing amendment to the professional services agreement with Barge Design Solutions for construction, engineering, and inspection services on the Wall Triana Highway, Graphics Drive, I five sixty-five project in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions, discussion? Saying none. Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Finally, I have resolution number 2023-270-R. This is to award the bid for project number 2023-006-ITB Downtown Ditch Drainage Improvement to Grayson Carter and Son Contracting in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirteen cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion seconded. Any questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And motion passes. Thank you, Michael. Human Resources.
I have two items for your consideration this evening. The first one is resolution 2023-262-R to authorize changes to the city's job classification plan. The request in this resolution is to increase the grades of pay for police records clerks to take them from a grade six to a grade seven, and also to increase the grades of pay for police dispatchers and move them from a grade eight to a grade nine.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion seconded. Any questions?
I just wanted to thank Megan and her staff for this. These are very hard positions to fill, and we appreciate the support for our employees.
Thank you. We really think it will make a difference.
Good deal.
Okay, ready for vote. Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The second item is resolution 2023-263-R. This resolution authorizes a professional services agreement with Evergreen Solutions LLC in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred dollars to conduct a classification and compensation study for the city of Madison. And the purpose of the study is to evaluate rates of pay for all city employees, compare them to the market, and propose adjustments to the pay scale. If approved tonight, we will, we will begin the study immediately, and we expect to have numbers for you all and our city financial advisors to review around the holidays.
Move to approve.
Second. Any questions?
No, I'd just like to say that I really appreciate that you're doing this. I think it really will help the retention and finding employees across all of City Hall. I really appreciate this, so thank you.
Thank you. Ready for vote. Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Legal.
I have a proposed ordinance number 2023-240. This is the second reading of this authorizing Madison Utilities request to dispose of point zero zero, sorry, point zero 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 seven acres of property on Wall Triana that are no longer being utilized by you. Basically, they are looking to us to authorize it, and that'd be the substance.
Move to approve. Second. Any discussion or questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And motion passes. Planning.
The first item for you is ordinance number 2023-241. This is just a first reading, and the, the second item on the agenda is also related to this. We have a request to annex in a single-family house, and the next item is the setting the public hearing to zone the property R one A upon annexation. This did go to the planning commission, and they are supporting it. The public hearing would be set for September twenty fifth of this year in the second item that's before you. So you don't need to take action on the annexation ordinance, but you do need to approve the resolution to set the public hearing.
Make motion to set the public hearing?
Second. Motion seconded. Ready for vote. Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The third item is proposed ordinance number 2023-180. This is a first reading. There is a project that was approved. The area that is highlighted in purple was located in the floodplain. The developer had the intention of filling that and bringing it out of the floodplain, which they go through FEMA for that approval. In the interim, according to our ordinance, that area in purple was put into a floodplain easement, so that the project could move forward and the developer could build out the area that's not in the floodplain. The developer has subsequently filled in the property, gotten a LOMAR S, a letter of map revision based on fills from FEMA, and so now it is appropriate to take the floodplain easement off, and that's what this action is doing. And so, again, this is a first reading, and we'll be back at your next meeting asking for approval of this. All of the engineering and all the entities have signed off on this easement being removed. The second item is proposed ordinance, or the fourth proposed ordinance, number 2023-246. This is for vacation of utility and drainage easement in the rear yard at a Heritage Hills lot. This is also first reading. The homeowners are looking to do some improvements in their backyard, and so they're requesting to vacate this portion of the easement in their backyard. And again, we are all supporting, all of the entities, utilities and so forth are supporting this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Police.
Here for resolution number 2023-244-R. We'd like to contract with a company on a steady cycle for monthly shredding. So we have a lot of records that are on a strict retention schedule, both by state and federal law, that we have to shred constantly, and as of right now, it leads to hours and hours of unproductive time of employees just sitting around shredding with the tiny shredders we have here. So what this company does, they come out with a truck with an industrial-sized shredder and can do in twenty minutes what it takes us hours to do. And the only thing we have to do is ensure that one of our employees is there to witness the shredding, and then they'll take all the paper away and burn it and dump it.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and seconded. Any questions?
Chief, would we be able to coordinate this with city clerk if they were to have things that needed to be shredded also as a time-saving piece?
Sure.
There's a bunch of stuff down there that we may be able to look at that might save us a bunch of time downstairs.
We currently have a company that we've been using for a while.
We've got one that we use. How much do we pay for that?
We pay two hundred and fifty dollars for six canisters whenever we call them to come.
So this is an hourly rate?
It's a monthly rate.
It's a monthly rate.
Right.
So whatever we do, that's what they're going to charge us.
Right.
But can we coordinate those?
We could, if you like.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Like a hundred and thirty, better than two hundred and something, whatever, okay. It's great. That helps.
We don't call them every month.
We don't call them unless we're ready to shred according to state law, but usually we have six canisters, which are the same size as your garbage cans at your home. So whenever we get those six filled for our destruction period, then we call them. Well, if they empty the shred up in our office, we have a small office-sized one, and they will, they're going to do that one also.
It sounds like this is kind of a one-time shot of getting rid of a whole bunch of stuff.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, we'll coordinate.
There you go. Report back.
Okay, ready for vote. Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, chief. Recreation.
I have resolution 2023-252-R, approving door guard weather notification system for Dublin and Palmer Parks in the amount of eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Let me start telling you about how we clear fields and pools and all that, so everybody knows from the beginning how we got to this point. So we have a thirty-minute rule. So we got an app on our phone, and oh, by the way, there are million lightning apps, and trust me, every citizen that gets upset when we close the pool or close a field has a different app than what we got. The airport has a different lightning notifications than what we have. So when I ever talk to a citizen, I'm like, my app trumps your app, no matter what. It's just, this is the way we do that, because we're not going to compromise safety. So we wait thirty minutes after the last lightning strike or, or sound of thunder to redo, jump back in the pool, to get back on the field and play, or whatever we do. So yes, you know, we, we have three recades that worked Palmer Park, just for an example, last, last weekend. Had a storm come out of nowhere, had thirty people trapped at the lower quad, because it takes three recades to run to each field, stop each activity, and clear the field. So by then, storm hits, got lightning, got kids on fields. That's one of the issues that we have on a regular basis. And when I saw the price of this, when I was asked to look into it by our different organizations, I was like, oh, no, there's no, no way. I'd rather spend eighty-seven thousand on other things. But we had Fourth of July, twenty twenty-two, had a bunch of firemen, police. I'm on my phone, looking at the weather, checking, make sure it's safe. Out of nowhere, bolt of thunder. I got two thousand people on a field that I'm trying to get into Dublin to take cover because there's a storm coming. It was mentioned that this is for lightning only. This is not lightning. This is weather. So tornadoes, other weather events, and lightning, of course, and it also can notify everybody in case of an active shooter, for example, or a lost child, or other notifications that would trigger the sound to go off. And, and, you know, we can make announcements that way. One of the other issues, one of the other features of this is it's site-specific. So I'm not getting weather from the airport. I'm not getting weather from another station in Madison, or it'll be right at that park. So when we say it's ten miles away, it's literally going to be ten miles from that park, not ten miles from the airport. The mayor can tell you, I think this is the biggest complaint he gets about rec, is when we have to close facilities. A lot of times, the sun's out, and a, and a storm is bearing down on us, and, well, why'd you close the field when the, when the sun's out and it's shining? Well, we have a storm. I got to get thousands of people out of Dublin and Palmer Park. It's just not one baseball field. It's several fields. It's several people in a pool. It's a swim meet. It's, you know, a lot of, a lot of events that we have, a Fourth of July, an Easter egg hunt, where it's not just a few people there, it's a few thousand people there.
How will the alert, I know, I want you to go ahead and.
Let's get a motion and second. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Spears, go ahead.
So how, so from an alert system, how would citizens be alerted? Does the park have any ability?
It will have a speaker in the park, just as, like, you got a tornado siren, it'll have a siren that will notify when it's unsafe, and it will have the fields cleared a lot sooner than somebody running around going, you need to clear the field. And oh, by the way, umpires and everybody's going to argue with us because my app didn't say it had a lightning strike come in, or there's not a, it says, this, this storm's ten miles out. Well, this would give us more clarity on that.
So is there an app and a siren?
There's an app that'll be on staff's phone, and then there'll be a siren that's triggered automatically. Takes the decision-making out of our hands a hundred percent.
Okay.
So the staff will be trained in when they hear the siren, clear the field?
Yeah, and, and we'll have that as posted everywhere. And, and the siren's going to be a lot more effective than a sixteen-year-old recade that we had out there this weekend arguing with a forty, you need to get off the field. In fact, I got an email about it this morning of teams refusing to leave when staff told them.
We still have coaching meetings on the front end of baseball, softball, basketball. So one of the other things we do is we have parent, and the parent and coaching meetings, which at this point, we would tell them the process of what to expect and what we need them to be able to follow from a safety standpoint.
Correct.
So on the front end, everybody'll know how the system works and what to expect, and when they hear that, that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
And if nothing else, go back to, even if you can't get everybody out of this, out of the park, you can get them to their cars.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the key, is to get them to where they need to be from a safety standpoint.
And the other feature, it can tell you when it's all clear. We got to wait a half hour. John, you've been out there, we're, we're a half hour behind at a six o'clock game, and it's all clear thirty minutes later, we're thirty minutes behind, plus the game game, and it's all clear thirty minutes later, we're thirty minutes behind, plus the game runs over, we're getting kids to bed at ten o'clock at night. During school night. Um, I understand it's expensive, and I'm a taxpayer too. And when I first saw the cost of this, I was like, is there another system? There's other systems that just do lightning, and it's all reactive, nothing predictive, nothing, you know, that, that wouldn't be an app on our phone that, that we would, you know, have to notify people. This can, you know, we live in an age where an active shooter is not out of the realm of possibility anymore.
Well, I guess let's also clarify, this is not just one incident. You got Dublin and Palmer.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is two locations.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, I mean, even by my math, that's eighty-six divided by two.
Mm-hmm.
For two locations. And then you got multiple fields at those locations in which you're protected. And anybody that's been out at Palmer, you've been all the way in the back, uh, or Dublin, you've been all the way up at the top. Um, it's not exactly a hop, skip, and a jump to get out when there is weather. And you can get caught very easily.
Um, last, the last storm we had, the fences came down at the, at Wesco, so I have fence repair. That could have been people on the field, and unfortunately, we were lucky enough to get them off the field.
Mm-hmm. How many sirens will there be then, Corey? We have like one or two.
Palmer, Palmer has two, I believe, and then Dublin has one.
Okay.
Um, we, and, and the other thing, if I live next to Palmer Park, is this thing gonna go off at three in the morning and wake me up? We can set it to when the park's open and closed.
And maybe future expansion to the community centers, Sunshine Oaks, too.
And, um, Hexagon.
And Hexagon.
Yeah.
Another good point.
Yeah, I mean...
It's a step in the right direction, and it's all about safety.
It, it's not an everyday need, but man, when we have, you know, Fourth of July, and that bolt of lightning comes down and hits a tree right in front of me, it scared me. I mean, I, I'm gonna be honest with you. I was trying to get, and trying to get two thousand people, when the sky opens up, to listen and where to go is almost impossible.
Seems like it's been every day lately.
Oh, gosh.
Lot of storms.
Yeah, we've had a lot of storms. Okay. So, it sounds like you did a lot of investigation. Why did you pick Thoroguard?
Yeah, because they're predictive instead of reactive. Every other one would be, okay, there's a lightning strike ten miles away. This one can predict the lightning strike's gonna be coming. Um, or, or tornado could pop up, the barometric pressure that reads, all that kind of stuff. It's, it's, it's predictive instead of reactive. I mean, the reactive stuff is on your phone, though. Lightning strikes already happened by the time it popped up on your phone. And, you know, I get people that say, well, that lightning's fifteen miles away. Well, if you can hear it and see it, it, it's, it's a threat.
Well, I mean, just this past weekend, in Florence, there was a death by a lightning strike.
Yeah.
We can't afford for it to be one of our children.
I watched the news tonight about the white. I mean, their, their sirens didn't go off and, and notify those people. And, and I'm not saying it's, it's gonna be the, you know, people are gonna be people, and, and they only can listen to us so much. I don't carry a badge. But, um, when they hear a siren over my fifteen-year-old, sixteen-year-old recade, they're gonna listen to the siren instead of the recade.
Mm-hmm. Thanks. Ready for a vote? Just one other question. Is it yearly amount or is it a one-time?
Uh, it's a one-time. The only, uh, we, we did some preference checks. The only expense is if the, it has a backup battery. So, um, if it's hardwired and, and the battery goes out, they, they have to come out and change the battery, but I think that happens every, seven years after.
Okay. Right, that's all. Ready for a vote? Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next.
Uh, my next item's Resolution 2023-253-R approving the purchase of materials for the air-supported structure for the outdoor pool at Dublin from Horizon Building Systems in the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, when the mayor came in, twenty sixteen, we put up the air structure over the outdoor pool to give more water time to the swim teams. Um, when we purchased that, you know, we told them, we've taken it up and down every year. Um, one of the things that Horizon told us when we bought that was, you're gonna have to replace the emergency doors, because they're, you know, just from the magic, putting something up and taking it down, it just wears out over time. And that's, there's some other little tools in there and, and little pieces, but the, the main bulk of that cost is the emergent fire emergency doors.
Move to approve.
Target.
Motion second. Any questions? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Corey. Okay, now we're at person agenda for public comments. Each member of the public's limited to three minutes for speaker. Um, please come forward and state your name and your district when you speak, and we have one card turned in from Bernard Depp, Mayor.
There was enough left over from the first part of the meeting to talk about, because I didn't have time to write up the rest on the card. Okay, I appreciate, um, the rec, um, um, details on, on that, uh, but they're on the, in that particular quote, there is an annual upgrade thing on there. You know, you'll end up seeing on the sheet, because I, I reviewed those pre-meeting. So, there is more, there is a cost, an annual cost for it. But, okay, with Palmer, with two sirens, and then with the Dublin, one siren, I think the thing is that when the siren goes off and those, those staff members are not respected for people getting off the field, I think they should be able to have a policy to call the police non-emergency and get the police out there to help them. Because honestly, it's safety, and if people aren't respecting the workers, you know, that needs to, you know, that, that needs to be spelled out. So, I think a policy and procedure thing with this also needs to be detailed. And then, if those, if they, if this is protective system and it works well, once the third location does get developed enough to where we would really need it, because it's not really needed now, I don't think. I mean, you know, once those parks, you know, park, whatever. So, I'm all about safety and all that kind of thing. So, I'm glad he, he did the research on this, and I hope this does work out well, but it does need to have some follow-up with, um, because I, 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 I really, that's very disrespectful for people. And I don't care if it's a sixteen member, sixteen-year-old staff member, they're following the park's guidelines and things, and, and they're speaking for the city. So, um, I, I do think that some of these, um, billing charges and some of these things, I don't know, you know, it's lined up under finance, and I'm not really sure, you know, how things are really close to getting scrutinized on some of the, um, building and development things now that the, um, there was an explanation on, um, those, um, ease, you know, the, the, um, the flooding, the flooding, um, the floodplain and those, the floodplain easement, utility and drainage easement. Now, I, I understand a little bit more about those from the explanation, but I do think that we do need to be very careful about, um, how, how, um, things are planned for the city. And I do, um, also do think that, uh, liquor licenses should be mapped out, and we should know where those are, so that when somebody comes up and they want to put one in, well, you know, again, uh, is it, is it great to have it near a school or whatever? And I think there's some, some more things that can be done on planning. And the finance stuff that's coming up for the approvals, um, and what's gonna be passed for next year's budget, I don't know, there's not, there's not a lot of time given, I don't think.
You missed, Mayor, you're out of time. Thank you. If anyone else who'd like to address the council, please come forward.
Um, well, nevermind, sorry. Um, my, uh, my, my kids have gone to...
Could you state your name and the district?
My name's Greg Fields. I don't know which district I'm in. I'm sorry.
You got a neighborhood?
Uh, Dirt Road.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, my, um, I've been in, uh, my kids have been in, in Madison Elementary for about five years. I've appreciated the school. I've appreciated what they've done. But, my son came home with his book. And this book, my son came to me and said, there's a poem in here that said, "Blood of children on the walls." And he looked at me and said, is this appropriate data? So, I looked at it, and this is, let me just read some excerpts. Uh, Byron Burns in his, in his, um, in his restroom, in his house. He likes playing with fire. His mother grabs him by the neck and drags him down the stairs. This is in the book for eight-year-olds. Mom, are you really gonna, Mama, are you really gonna burn you? She wasn't, she wasn't even gonna take him to the hospital. She was gonna set him on fire, then patch him up at home. Please don't do that to him. I've always wondered what, uh, I've always wondered what part of him he'd, he'd burn. She burned his face. Maybe it's just to scare him and set his clothes on fire while he was in them. Um, I knew Mama was going for a ski at match. Please, Mama, don't burn him too bad, okay? Please, please. Joey was, uh, starting up again. Don't worry, sweetheart. I won't. I'm just gonna burn his fingers, so he won't be tempted by fire again. Fingers. Did he say he was gonna burn someone's fingers? She sat on his chest. This is Mama. Um, not this time, buster. You're gonna pay. The match was getting closer and closer, but, but I knew Byron would feel the heat. Uh, so, so close now, I could, I could hear the sweat on his finger getting, getting turned into steam and making a "piss" sound. That's called steam. Unbelievable. Okay, so let's talk about Byron, the boy in the, the boy in the book. Boy one's style of death language was to just yell real loud and slap the side of Larry's head after each word. Lemme whack. See, whack. Them, whack. Gloves, whack. Young, whack. Fool, whack. Whack-a-whack. This is eighth grade. My, my son's eight years old. This is fourth grade. Okay, so, maybe the dad, maybe the dad is doing something good here. Um, the dad picked up his toothbrush. Uh, hold on. Dad, let me, um, why do you always hide your toothbrush? Dad picked up his toothbrush and said, look at this. Not only is it an instrument perfect for brushing your teeth, it also has wonderful uses, too. And the greatest thing, you can rinse it afterwards, and no one can tell you what it's, what it's used for. I know that the best toothbrush for cleaning is always someone else's. I caught Byron using my toothbrush for cleaning quarters in the dog's mouth. Okay, so in here, I'm running out of time. Um, but...
Mr. Fields, you are out of time. Three minutes are up.
Mr. Fields, have you spoken with the school board and the superintendent? Have you spoken with the school board and the superintendent?
Was it in the library or in the teacher's classroom? What's the name of it?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fields. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. State your name.
I'm just gonna finish. This is BB Ice in District Seven. Uh, I noticed you were worried about shredding, the shredding expense. I would like to say, in the agenda today, you have approved way too much money for Enfinger. Enfinger is great at taking advantage of things, and he certainly has. Uh, you spent, uh, fifteen hundred dollars on sod for a roundabout. I couldn't, I begged for sod for a cemetery when my husband died. Could not get it. I had to buy it myself. Finally, the city finally put some on there. And here you're worried about the looks of a roundabout. You don't even put it on the cemetery lots. Also, you're spending twenty-seven thousand dollars for winter decorations. So, downtown, my God. You know, everybody in my sub-decision, if they went downtown, there wouldn't be enough spaces for them to park. I can't go because it's so crowded down there. But, uh, uh, also, these twenty-seven thousand dollars, I can't even get a, uh, you all to even think about putting a fence around the cemetery. Uh, when we have all these wonderful storms we have every day, uh, it, it, a lot of the trash that's over there in the Shantytown Division, uh, gets thrown over into the cemetery. I have taken some off of my husband's grave that has blown over there from there, because there is no fence. They put one on the western side, but then put one anywhere else. I don't trust them to put it on the right line anyway. Trying to get that line, where I know where the line is between the cemetery property and the Shantytown property. Uh, but, uh, also, I don't know how far, he, he didn't say how far away this lightning thing will tell you. He mentioned his lightning and other things that have to worry also. Uh, I wanna know how far away it will detect it. Ten miles, was that what he said? That would be great to, that would be great to know that if everybody in the, in the city would know that, not just the people sitting there. Uh, you know, I've got, as I said, I was caught in one of them. Had to pull off in Crowe, because it came down so fast. Uh, but anyway, you're spending too much money on recreation, and, uh, a lot of this money that, you know, you can't spend elsewhere. Uh, I, I, I guess that's all. Just pay attention to what you're spending, because you're spending my money.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Margie Daly, Karen's District. Um, okay, about this lightning rod or whatever you guys want to spend eighty-seven thousand dollars on, I don't know if this is obsolete. I couldn't figure out if it was an app. Is it an apparatus that goes on top of a pole? You're talking about sirens. These are gonna be blaring in our neighborhoods all, every, all the time. There's lightning, uh, ten miles out. I'm right by the park. I'm gonna hear this thing go off all the time. I think it's a waste of money, uh, on that, okay? I really wanted to also thank, uh, Councilman Seaford and Mayor for answering the questions that I asked. It's good to have a rapport rather than just ignore our questions, and tonight I saw that there was an attempt to answer it. So, my question on the Enfinger thing is, okay, it said the first draw. We've already done two change orders for this thing, over a hundred thousand dollars. That was my question. So, why didn't those two change orders come out of the original first draw instead of doing change orders prior to the first draw? And then, it's like, uh, whatever it is, five to ten percent on, uh, over the, you know, the amount we gave, then, you know, that's all they get, contingent or whatever. So, does that hundred thousand we've already given count in that, or doesn't it, since this is the first draw? That's my whole question on that. Um, then, you know, there's a problem with the First Amendment. This is our Constitution. Everyone's sitting up there looking out on this Constitution. I feel like my First Amendment and Fourteenth Amendment are continuously being broken by this council. Uh, I have freedom of speech in the First and equal rights in the Fourteenth. I am not getting any Freedom of Information requests. I'm being denied for idle curiosity. It's not, I have a passion for this city. I love this city, and I'd like to know how it works. I'd like to know why we have so many employees, new employees, new positions, and yet, we have, uh, departments that all they do is hire consultants. We're paying consultant here, consultant there. I mean, I'm glad to see the GeoTrack, the, um, whatever it is. I don't know if they're doing, uh, the ground penetrating radar to check for these streams now, but I, I was happy to see that on the agenda tonight, that we're finally gonna start looking into that. But is it really necessary to spend all that money like that? And I, I totally, you know, I just want, um, my freedom of information. I'm entitled to that by the Constitution of the United States. You refused five. None of those are idle curiosity. I spend my time. I spend my weekend going over these agendas. I look into almost everything. I think that it is awful disheartening that you have the nerve to tell me that it's only idle curiosity.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. State your name and your district. Seeing none, we will close public comments. No, ma'am. I mean, no, sir. No, sir. One, you have one time. All right, so, uh, are there any miscellaneous announcements?
I do want to ask, no work session this month, right? Because we...
Uh, yeah.
No, there's, there's one next week.
Next week.
Okay, very good.
Yes, I'll send out the agenda, uh, this evening, what I have so far.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anything else?
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Your adjourn. Thanks.
Hey, thanks for taking a minute to watch this video. And if you're watching this, you are part of an ask. It's an ask from Madison Visionary Partners to be a participant in the funding of our new community center. You know, I don't think I ever could have imagined Madison, Alabama, growing into the ninth-largest city in the state of Alabama, almost sixty thousand people. But I am so proud of our city and proud to be the mayor of this growing and positive community. We know we grow because we're close to fabulous jobs. We have an incredible school system. And it's now time to take a building that was tarnished with a name and an activity into a spotlight of something that will be, for years and years, the centerpiece of Madison. You know, it will not only house an enhanced senior center, but it's gonna give us incredible functionality that we haven't had before. Multiple meeting rooms of different sizes and shapes to allow our growing community and the groups that want to support that community space to meet. It has specialty rooms for woodworking, for ceramics, uh, game rooms, weight rooms, special needs gym, and I could go on and on with the different functionality pieces that are needed in our city that's grown as large as it has. So, these naming right opportunities, ala what we did with, uh, the YMCA back in two thousand and eight and nine, takes something that needs to be done for our community and transitions it with naming right opportunities into something that we're all gonna be so proud of. So, as Mayor of the City of Madison, I can tell you, I thank you for your willingness to support our community. I ask you to be a part in any form or fashion that you can, and we can't wait to cut the ribbon, and all of us enjoy something for years and years to come. Thanks for taking a few minutes to watch it. This is a very exciting day for the Emergency Medical Response Partners in this community-wide project. Pulse Point is a smartphone app that alerts CPR-trained citizens to cardiac arrests close to them so that they can provide help. Sudden cardiac arrest can happen to anyone, anywhere. It could happen to someone while shopping here at Bridge Street. In fact, let's take a moment and see how this might happen. With a sudden cardiac arrest, every second counts. That's why Pulse Point is so remarkable. This cutting-edge technology can save lives by alerting people who can start CPR before emergency responders arrive. Even those who aren't experts in CPR or AED application can still help. Pulse Point gives specific instructions on CPR techniques and can reinforce earlier training. During those precious minutes while the first responders were en route, our citizen responder has made all the difference to this victim and greatly improved her chance of survival. Pulse Point made that possible.
My name is Cody White. I'm firefighter, paramedic, and I've been here ten months. The best advice that I would give to someone that's coming in would be to be yourself, be persistent. If this is what you want to do, work for it. It takes a lot to get to this point, but once you do, all your hard work will pay off. Being here is like being in a large family. You know, everybody has to play their part. Even after ten months, I, I still learn something new every day. Um, it is everything that I've wanted it to be, and it's, it's actually been a whole lot more. I love it. I love it. I really can't put in words how, how much this job, you know, how well it makes me feel to be able to help citizens... to be able to help citizens and, you know, get to help my brothers, and it truly is the best job in the world. The experiences that I've gained in this short amount of time have been really life-changing.
So as you can see, more and more families, more and more people continue to plant their roots in the city of Madison. Managed growth has been a part of our community since the nineteen eighties. As a matter of fact, this community has grown by almost thirteen thousand people per decade. That's well over a thousand people per year. Guys, folks are coming to Madison a family a day. Why are they doing that? Well, it's because our quality of life is so strong. So as mayor, on behalf of our city council, I'm so proud to be able to say the state of our city is strong, and it continues to get stronger. You know, one of the neat things is you get national accolades, like Money Magazine naming us the twelfth best city to live in in the nation, or Niche talking about the city is the best suburb to live in in the state of Alabama, or our school district being the number one school district in the state. and our biggest partner has been our Madison City Schools.
When my family moved here almost twenty years ago, one of the most important things we were looking for was an outstanding school system. And we were able to raise our son, who went to Madison City Schools from kindergarten through high school, and now he's at the University of Alabama. And so, we have invested in this community, and we are so thankful for being able to raise our son in such a safe and wonderful environment.
Our partnership with our Madison City Schools has now been in existence twenty-five years, as they recently celebrated that anniversary. It starts with our superintendent and our Madison School Board, the school board appointed by our Madison City Council.
We are working hand in glove with our schools to make sure that as we grow, we, they are prepared also to grow, and so that we can work together to plan for our future.
They continue to be focused on the education of our students along with their safety. Have they been successful? Absolutely. Every school in the Madison School District receives an A grade from the state of Alabama, and every school, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school, is in the top ten in their respective category within the state. Our Madison City Schools are strong.
The vision, twenty-five years ago, of, of a city council and citizens who came together and said, "We want to develop a school district that is recognized both nationally and statewide as a leader." And here we are twenty-five years later with the number one school district in the state of Alabama, and their vision has, has come to fruition. Because of the hard work of school board members in the past and present, teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, and especially students, we're blessed to have fantastic students. And so, quality of life starts with the education process.
I think it's the commitment to education for our kids, that's reflected by the excellent school system we have, the fact we have a safe community. And those are two major factors that people look for when they want to relocate. How good are the schools, how safe is the community? And we have both.
So while we're absolutely known for education in the city of Madison, the neat thing for us is we're now also known as the home of the Rocket City Trash Pandas. What started in two thousand and eighteen as a vision of bringing minor league baseball together with a multi-use venue is now a reality.
The best thing about Madison, in my humble opinion, is the Trash Pandas and Toyota Field.
I think with the success that we've had with, with the team, and then how it's continued to bring more business and more opportunities, also helps bring a little more notoriety. I mean, the Trash Pandas is something that I personally even send t-shirts out to my family across country because it's such an iconic logo.
You know, at the very first groundbreaking for that facility, I don't think any of us truly had an idea of how successful this would be. This year, we finally had a full season of baseball and non-baseball events.
Coming to the ballpark, experiencing baseball, experiencing a fair, experiencing a Christmas light show, a beer and wine fest, a movie night, a Halloween trick-or-treating event, I think that we have a lot of diversity, a lot of options to share with everyone in the community, and, and life is great, life is fun.
The Rocket City Trash Pandas played sixty-nine home games and two playoff games. They led the league in attendance with over three hundred and twenty-seven thousand people coming through the gates. And most importantly to all of us, they led minor league baseball in merchandise sales with over four million dollars worth of merchandise going to every state in the U.S. and multiple countries.
I'm the number one fan. I grew up going to Huntsville Stars games, so as soon as I heard that we were going to have our own minor league baseball team, I envisioned just a lot of summer fun for my family, but what it's turned into is year-round fun with all kinds of activities, and I love that we have something of this caliber right in our backyard.
Rocket City Trash Panda Baseball is here to stay and exciting for our community. We've shared some facts and statistics on our schools, on our Rocket City Trash Pandas, but one other critical component that makes Madison great is Madison Hospital. You know, we just celebrated the ten-year anniversary of Madison Hospital, and the impact that it continues to make for our community is huge. There was no one stronger when it came to managing COVID than the folks at Madison Hospital. Mary Lynn Wright and her entire staff took the lead for months upon months at a time. Madison benefited from having that facility in our city limits.
It's one of the things that we really looked at when I was involved with the city council, how do we get a hospital here? Because Madison right now was far enough away that you had a, you could have a twenty-minute drive to the hospital, and we had the opportunity to get it here, and it's been unbelievable. I mean, I've had to use it myself for an accident one time, and it was so nice to have a hospital five minutes away when, when the accident happened.
So we also benefit by having so many other things that happen at Madison Hospital. Over fourteen hundred births this year alone, over fifty-three thousand ER visits. You know, there's sixty-five hundred patients that are in hospital and another twelve thousand that come in and go that same day. Madison Hospital continues to make a big impact positively for the city of Madison. And when it comes to community, I know I speak on behalf of our citizens and our Madison City Council, when it comes to how proud we are of our Madison Police Department and Madison Fire and Rescue, both continue to make a positive impact for our community each and every day.
All of our resources revolves around our people. Our badge of honor today is that we are, everything is motivated towards the quality of life, not just our citizens, but the people in general.
I am working now with my command staff to look at the different areas of growth and see how we can manage that, both in new personnel and what we can do with new technologies, our presence, so people know that we're there. And also, again, getting back to the differential style of patrols, we need to look at traffic safety, which is big in our city, safety in communities, and the only way that people are going to feel safe in their communities is to see, interact with their police officers.
One of the big things that provides for security for our citizens is our ISO one rating. That's the top rating for fire department in the, in the country, and we maintain that. We run a lot of community risk reduction activities every day, we're in the schools every day with, with, working with the teachers and the staff of the schools to make sure that everybody's safe there, and truly, that flows over into the families from the schoolchildren. You'll see us out training every day, so if you see us out laying hose lines out, we're getting better. We're making sure that we've got great support from the city to make sure we can get to you quickly if you do have an emergency, whether it's a medical emergency, or a fire emergency, or a wreck. And then, we also train every day to make sure we're good when we get there, to make a big difference for you.
So is it any wonder that Madison continues to grow almost by a family a day, and that the biggest challenge that we have is managing that growth? It's an incredibly strong city with a great school system, a lot of activities to do, and it's safe with a hospital right here local. Madison, Alabama continues to thrive, and we continue to be proud of all that we collectively do together. It's always exciting when we have something new to talk about at these state of the city or celebrate Madison events. In this case, we have four things that we're excited about, one of which you know, three of which I can't wait to talk to you about. And the first one that you know about is the old Three Springs facility. The building formerly known as Three Springs is going to transition into our Madison Community Center. You know, one of the best things that'll happen is we have more space for our seniors. You know, we have so many folks using our Meals on Wheels and our free lunch programs. This gives us the opportunity to extend those. It also allows the city to have dedicated space for our special needs community, children with autism, wheelchair-bound kids who look to play basketball. A lot of different opportunities where we have the space for them to stretch out, be a part of an activity with their families. It creates more space for organizations outside of the city of Madison. Folks like the National Children's Advocacy Center, Wellstone, even the Enrichment Center need to have meetings here in Madison where the folks don't have to travel as far, and this facility will allow them to do that. And then, larger organizations like the American Legion, who continues to grow in numbers and do more and more things for our community, will have a large meeting space that they can come to and continue to build off what they've already accomplished. It has a lot of different specialty rooms that the community can use, a ceramics room, it has a woodworking room, places for gardening, for master gardeners to come in and help our community, and then smaller rooms for additional birthday parties and special gatherings that are needed. As you can see, it has an incredibly wonderful courtyard that we're going to turn into a quiet space where everyone can enjoy with picnic tables. It has a game room that we're going to be able to utilize, and much, much more. But that's just inside. Across the street and on the entire property, it's thirty acres worth of activity. So whether that's archery, walking trails, this community center, transitioning over the next couple of years, is going to be something that Madison residents are so excited about. So we're going to go from here, across the street, and transition to the Bradford Creek Greenway to talk about the next project that will make a big difference for the city of Madison residents. Well, as our journey continues, we're now here at the Bradford Creek Greenway, right next to our trailhead off of Mill Road. And many of you, having run, walked, or biked this trail, have been close to the horse farm that's right next to it. It's Sunshine Oaks. You've been here in the spring when the flowers are yellow and the horses are in the field. It's beautiful. The neat thing about it for our community is we now own it. You know, Sunshine Oaks is forty acres of a passive park that used to be all pastureland. Now, we're going to be able, from a city standpoint, to enjoy that. We've listened to our community talk about more green space and more connectivity, and now with Sunshine Oaks, we're going to have the ability to transition this over the next couple of years into something that our community can use in multiple different ways. You know, the barn is something that we see transitioning into an event center for weddings, for small family gatherings, and along with that, the house that's next to it can support that with any of the cooking and food that needs to be done. The forty acres, will we transition that hopefully into something that's disc golf, to picnic areas, and of course, one of the things we know we want to have is a big playground where folks can utilize that in so many different ways. You know, Sunshine Oaks is a great purchase for our city, and I applaud our city council and especially out of the mayor's office, Steve Smith, for helping us make this happen and giving us, again, forty more acres to utilize as a city in something that we all can enjoy. We've transitioned over to Limestone County, and recently, council approved the McKinley Homes Project. It's a hundred-acre project that will have about three hundred and fifty units for sale of all different kinds. What it also will have is thirty-three thousand square feet of commercial and retail space directly on Brown's Ferry. But most exciting for Madison residents, especially on the western side, we secured twenty-five acres of green space that they will donate to the city. So each time that Madison grows, we want to do it in a smart, controlled way, and in a way that benefits our city in adding homes of quality, retail and commercial space, and in this case, park space. So we're back from Limestone County, here in Madison County. As a matter of fact, we're back in town Madison. We're on the Hexagon Campus, a great partner with the city of Madison, formerly Integraf, kind of where Madison grew up, but this campus currently has eleven hundred employees, and they have worked with the city of Madison on something that we're so excited to be able to share with you today. As our community continues to grow, we're investing in the critical infrastructure and services that we need to prepare us for the future, and a lot of that future has to do with public